I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Presentations, MECC 1,000 books before kindergarten.
So I'd like to introduce Jill Regan, the ETL from ECC. Our director is taking care of a family issue this evening, and she will lead us through this presentation. Thank you, Jill.
Thank you, Maureen. So like Maureen said, I'm Jillian Regan. I'm the ETL here at the ECC. I also have Sal here with me. She's our president of our home and school. But I just wanted to take a minute to thank the school committee members for allowing us a moment of their time to recognize a few of our students who've been able to read with their families a thousand books before they've entered kindergarten. So the Thousand Books Program before kindergarten is a national program developed to introduce literacy to children before reaching kindergarten. Introduction to literacy at such a young age is really important to the educational development of these children. So I know it's late, so we'll go kind of quick, and parents, you don't have to stay if you don't want to, because I know it's probably bedtime. But last year, we awarded eighty students for reaching one hundred, four hundred, seven hundred, and a thousand books, and this year we've awarded eighty-two. And there's six of us here that are being recognized today. So I also just wanted to thank the Marlborough Public Library for their partnership with us. It's been two successful years, and we really appreciate all their help and effort and contribution to this program. So I'll start calling students. You guys ready?
Yeah.
So first up, we have Lila. Next up, we have Jake. Bryson. Next up, we have Penelope. Lorenzo. Lorenzo. And Casey. So congratulations to all of our students, and may you continue to love reading as long as you grow into your learning path. I also just want the kids to come up quick so we can take a group photo, if that's okay?
Yep.
Come on up here, guys.
Come on up.
Come up, come see us. Come up here.
Ah, thank you.
When do you have them come around? Gran, usually we have them come right up here.
You guys want to jump in?
Yeah.
Yeah, come on over here, and we'll be behind you.
Okay.
Stand right here.
Stand right here in front of us.
Stand right here in front of us.
How are you?
Now you get to go. You gotta look that way.
Special Olympics.
Thank you. I'm not sure we can top that adorableness, but we're going to try. So many students from our district each year attend and participate in the Metro West Special Olympics. We have a special tribute to them this evening, and we have many of them here in the audience. So I'm not sure if you want to speak first or show the video. Speak first. Come on up, Brian Zimmern and Kristin Chevalier.
Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight. I'm Kristin Chevalier, School Adjustment Counselor at Whitcomb and Eatwork. This is Brian Zimmern, who everybody knows already, but is a special education teacher. We also have a number of our student athletes and staff present here tonight with their families. Thank you, guys, for all showing up. This year, a number of our schools in Whitcomb participated in the Special Olympics. The ECC participated in the indoor Special Olympics at their main office in Marlborough. The remainder of our participants attended the Metro West Special Olympics at Bowditch Field in Framingham. Over 200 students attended from the district. It was an inclusive event with regular education and special education students participating and cheering for each other, and many wonderful rallies at schools sending off and congratulating back our athletes. We presented as Marlboro United, thanks to wonderful T-shirts made by Tanya Biscotti. Staff and students had a fantastic time, and we appreciate all the help we received in the making the day special and fun for everyone. We'd like to share our achievements with you with the slideshow and after, present a gift to the school committee for your support, so please enjoy.
We'd like to call up all our athletes, and we have a special presentation to the school committee members. Everyone, come on up.
Over there, honey. Over there, over there. Oh, they're trying to match the names. Over here. Yeah, we'll give it to him, okay? Thank you. He'll be happy. Thank you very much. Put him in his mailbox.
Thank you so much. I hope you had a good time.
Just shut this down, and we can shut her off. Thanks. Thank you, yeah. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for the screen. Nice suggestion. Do you know what these are?
They're from Kelly Hall's class.
You're gonna find out.
That's from last year's gift, I'm afraid they aren't.
Bye. Yeah, shut that off. The middle one, yeah. Okay, perfect. Wow, it got quiet all of a sudden.
The public participation just leaves, you know.
Was it something you said? I would unfortunately request that we look at the MHS update at our next meeting, our last meeting.
Motion to postpone.
Sorry. Unfortunately, wires got crossed. So thank you for understanding.
We'll entertain that at the next meeting.
Thank you. I appreciate the entertainment.
Can I ask a quick question, though? Can, if we have questions about this, can we at least send something to you so that way we can have a productive discussion?
Absolutely.
Is that helpful?
That is exactly what I was about to say, so thank you.
Awesome. I was on your wavelength.
Sorry. We, thank you.
Yeah, together.
Superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As I had mentioned at the graduation in my remarks, this was the first year we actually had students with a global competency cord around their necks. Some of the students had so many things around their necks, I wasn't sure how they...
I had to question her. I think she had more than there were.
I don't think so. I think she's just that good.
She's just that good.
So we had six who were the global competency cords, and this is a project that has been near and dear to my heart for many years. These students demonstrated competency in several areas: language acquisition, a global travel experience, and a global focus learning project. And I was lucky enough to be invited to hear them sort of defend their project. And I have to commend them. They were really terrific, and I wanted to give you a heads up as to what they spoke about. Heidi De Persio, and you remember, she was, last time she was telling us about her project, Access to Education for Women in Developing Countries; Erin Doherty, Humans Material Waste; Madison Hediger, Maternal Mortality and Morbidity in Sub-Saharan Africa; Courtney Matthews, The Horrors of Burma and Myanmar; Thomas Redden, HIV and AIDS in South Africa; and Maria Stefanova, Catalonian Independence. I certainly hope that this spreads, and we have more and more students take part in this program. And it's definitely a few-year program. It's not just something you knock off in one semester. I've also included in the packet a communication from NEASC. It's hard to believe, but the school's decennial accreditation visit will be October 3, 2021, through October 6, 2021. And we have sent some people to the accreditation seminar, notably the incoming principal, Heather Kahn and Chris Henry. And the reason we send them is because there are new protocols for the visit. NEASC has really streamlined this process, new standards, a reduction in time needed, which is really good, as well as in alignment to the standards of evaluation so that we're not, you know, operating or working under several different standards that they're somehow aligned. So the letter is included, and if you have any questions on that, I'm sure it will continue to keep popping its head up as this visit approaches. Metro West Foundation Grant. Kudos to Sharon Buckley, who really ushered this through. We have been awarded the second grant in a few years from the Metro West Health Foundation in the amount of $129,849 over a three-year span. This is a continuation of a program that we have at Whitcomb, and this will help at the high school transition students who need assistance in transitioning back to regular school setting from conditions such as concussion and hospitalization, school phobia, school anxiety, and other reasons that would prohibit them from accessing the regular school day. So we're very gratified to have this grant and to have the whole secondary, you know, educational level serviced by it. And I did want to let you know that recently we have named the appointment of the supervisor of Mathematics 6 to 12. This was vacated by Dan Riley, and I would ask you to join us in welcoming the very capable Heather Kahn as the newly appointed supervisor of Mathematics 6 to 12. She's a graduate of Marlborough High School, a former student of mine. She's taught for eight years at the high school, both in and out of the STEM teams, and she currently serves as the Mathematics Department Teacher Leader. You know, spoken with her a few times, reluctant to leave the classroom, as we all are when we make that leap, but we feel that this is an absolutely perfect replacement for Dan. Couple of other things I wanted to mention. Thank you to all who participated in the graduation walk last Thursday, especially to the mayor, Mrs. Hennessy, and Mrs. Matthews, who accompanied us. And I know you had something. You were on a field trip. Sorry about that. Mrs. Ryan, you're looking very worrisome over there. It was truly a wonderful event, and I believe it's taken root in the district. I think the kids enjoy it, and I know the teachers do. At Richer, we had some retired teachers come back with their photos of the class when they were younger, so that was excellent. And I wanted to show you a gift that I got today from Kelly Hall, who is the fifth grade STEM Makerspace Engineering Wonder Teacher. These are for my grandchildren, who will be visiting me next week. These are bubble wands made out of a 3D printer. So today, bubble wands, tomorrow, artificial hips, artificial ankles, who knows? But I can't wait to try them out. So bubble wands in the shape of the panther paws. Thank you to Kelly. It was designed by a fifth grade student named Molly.
Love it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any questions? Ms. Hennessy.
Thank you. I love that we had those students that were able to participate in the Global Competency Program. I guess a question that I have is how are we looking to potentially grow that program? Because when I actually had a conversation around the dinner table at my own household, I had a number of high school students that kind of looked at me and went, hmm. So I guess my question is, is how are we communicating the opportunity and making sure that kids that, you know, that may fall into this and haven't necessarily thought about it are kind of pushed to have that conversation? Because I think in some cases, you know, where we wonder about why kids are sometimes taking AP courses or not taking AP courses, same kind of conversation. It takes, it takes a student that wants to kind of push themselves. I just kind of think it would be good to have the conversation with Mr. Riley and, and how are we pushing it out to make sure that we get more kids down this path to consider it.
And we did have co-advisors. Then we were down to one advisor this year, and from what I understand, that advisor is taking a position closer to home and some other things. So we need to make sure that the right person is the advisor.
Yeah.
Once again, and pushes it down beginning in ninth grade, if not even earlier.
Exactly, and I guess that was...
It's one of our key opportunities, and we have so many.
Well, it's a key opportunity, and when I hear about some of the situations that some of our students are already walking into as freshmen or sophomores or juniors, wherever, they're already kind of going down this path. But if they're not, they don't know that there are opportunities there, they may not actually move forward to execute.
Got it.
And I'd hate that opportunity to be missed where, you know, to me, it's kind of almost like science fair, right? It's, but it's in a different realm, and this might just be the thing that's the science fair for another kind of kid.
Thank you. Appreciate the feedback.
Thank you.
Assistant Superintendent Murphy.
Thank you. Federal Grants. On May 30, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education held a federal grants conference at the Best Western in Marlborough. DESC is reorganizing the application process for all federal grants. That means that in FY19, Title I Parts A and D, Title II Part A, Title III Part A, Title IV Part A, and Title V Part B will all be a consolidated application process, and we expect that this could impact the grant timelines. Additionally, there will be decreases in some of these grants, but final allocations will not be announced until the summer. Mike and I have been communicating about this, and we will update you on the status once in my next report. The STEM Integration for Education Leaders. Marlborough Public Schools is among the four teams selected to participate in Cohort Seven of the STEM Integration Program at WPI. The team will consist of teachers, administrators, and a 6 through 12 supervisor. Eliza Giroux, Rebecca Murphy, Allison Hathaway, Eileen Barry, Kalai P. Pantazopoulos, Cara Fisher, Robert Skaza, Wayne Labby, and Kathy Rickoff will develop a strategic plan for STEM STEAM integration in grades K through 8, participate in a two-day summer institute at WPI on August 15 and 16, participate in meetings at WPI throughout the year, as well as bimonthly meetings at school, present their final strategic plan at the end of the program to an audience of new teams, and then continue to mentor and support future participants in the program. I think it's important to connect actions to specific district improvement plan indicators. This committee that will be attending this integration program and the strategic plan they will draft supports the curriculum and instruction standard in the district improvement plan, which is Indicator 218, Refine and Expand Common Understandings of STEAM. The Joint Evaluation Committee. As we are completing another school year, the Joint Evaluation Committee is once again surveying all MEA members. In June 2017, we created a survey and used that baseline data to identify goals for this past year. In response to the survey, we focused on evaluative feedback throughout the year. As you may remember, all district administrators engaged in a book study of "Thanks for the Feedback: The Science and Art of Receiving Feedback" by William Douglas Stone and Sheila Heen, and professional development provided by Dr. Paul Ash. On June 4, we distributed an updated survey to MEA members to measure the effectiveness of this professional development and collect additional data. We have also begun formal communications regarding the role of the secondary evaluators that will be introduced in the fall. And I want to point out that, once again, these actions of the Joint Evaluation Committee support Supervision and Evaluation Indicator 421, ensure a common approach to supervision and evaluation within the district. I want to make those connections throughout my reports moving forward.
Any questions?
Thank you.
CNN. Minutes of May 22. Oh, wait a minute. We got another director's report. Sorry about that. Sitting there smiling, waiting.
Good evening.
Good evening.
On May 18, we had our fourth and last meeting, which helped to wrap up the evaluation of transition services offered to special needs students. Based on completed surveys and group activities, the assessment team identified career development as a focus area for the upcoming year. And we concluded that while a limited number of students in Marlborough High School have access to a range of career preparatory experiences, there's still a large amount of special ed students who don't have access to these supports. Students in the lower grades have limited access to career development, and educators and guidance counselors at lower grades lack the curriculum that highlights career preparation as a focus area. So based on this assessment, the following goal was developed for the upcoming year. By the end of the 2018-19 school year, in order to meet the planning and career readiness for all students, Marlborough Transition Team will collaborate to create a plan for a coordinated system of career preparatory offerings that span grade 8th through post-graduation, as measured by creation of an action plan that will outline. Preliminary benchmarks were discussed, and the next steps include formulation of a transition team to include cross-section staff and perhaps parents, and set meeting dates for the upcoming year to work on action steps to meet the established goal. We had a great cross-section...
Oh, sure. Thanks. We had a great cross-section from Hildreth, the high school, and Whitcomb. Guidance counselors, special ed teachers, paraprofessionals, administrators, that all helped in collaborating on a vision on where we want to see our transition services, not only for special ed students, but how can we then, you know, expand that to other students who might not be on a four-year college career path. So it was really great to hear our different opinions and different ideas, and to be able to take this next year to put a lot of that into, into motion. Also, as you had heard earlier, staff stats, staff and students from Harvard Public Schools participated in the Special Ed Olympics held on April 27 at Framingham State. Brian Ziman and Kristin Chevalier volunteered many hours to be able to put this together, and I do want to thank them. We appreciate all the efforts that they put into, into this. It was tremendous amount of time and effort, and it was a complete success. The kids had a lot of fun. Staff had a great time, too. And it was great to see so many staff and students throughout the district participate, and it really shows an inclusive district-wide initiative.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Question, Ms. Hennessy.
Thank you. Jody, just curious, are there business partners that we might be able to reach out to to help encourage opportunities for some of the students from a career standpoint?
Yeah, that's definitely one of, one of the action steps that will be incorporated in this, is to get more partnerships, internships, different experiences for students to be able to go out to. That's absolutely part of, part of what we're looking at.
That'd be great, because it, I mean, I feel like when I go around town, there seem to be some businesses that seem to be a little bit more forward-thinking in trying to do that. So, that'd be great to see more opportunities like that.
So, for the upcoming year, one of my updates will be when we formulate the action steps after the first couple of meetings, is to be able to present that, what those specific action steps are for you.
Great. And I just wanted to say, on a personal front, I had the opportunity to attend the Special Olympics this year, and I would really encourage you all, even if it's just for a few minutes, to go over to actually see what's happening, because the interaction and collaboration that's going on is absolutely amazing and heartwarming, because there's a lot of achievement, and just seeing everyone cheering for each other, it's a total team effort. And it was, it really was wonderful. It made me very proud to be able to turn around and say, that was Marlborough. And I have to tell you, I love the shirt, I'm really excited, and I will wear it with pride, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, the minutes of May 22, 2018.
Motion to accept.
Motion, Mayor, seconded to approve. Any discussion? CNN, all those in favor? Pose, carries. Public participation? Any public participation? Public participation?
Someone wants to participate.
CNN, 2018-19 MOA for the Behavior Techs.
Actually, it should read...
Three years.
It's three. I was gonna say, 2018 through 2021, MOA.
So, it says that in the status, perhaps, so...
Yes. So, Mike, you want to do it? Want me to do it? Okay.
Just happy to report that we came to a tentative agreement with the Behavior Technicians. It was a joy to work with them. They were wonderful. We came to an agreement in two sessions. So, I just want to thank them for their work on this, and I thank the negotiating committee as well. It's been a lot this year, and I'm glad to see we're wrapping a lot of them up.
So, I also wanted to thank the Behavior Technicians, and everybody who's been working on this, and make a motion to accept, we did it in executive session, but publicly, motion to accept the Behavior Tech agreement for three years, July 1, 2017, through June 30, 2018.
Motion, Mayor, seconded to approve. Any discussion?
Sorry, 21. Sorry, 21, yes.
2018.
2018, I know, I'm looking, you know what? I looked at the dates on the...
2017, right.
18 to 21.
Okay.
Sorry. There we go. Thank you.
Any discussion? CNN, all those in favor? Pose, carries. Thank you. FY operating budget transfers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a few transfers for tonight. The first is moving funds from SARI Reserve to cover a few SARI items that we have overspent this year. One was for nurse substitutes. Another was for a guidance counselor, because we had switched the role from school adjustment counselor to half and half, basically, at the Hildreth program. And the other was, we did hire an additional Behavior Tech at the ECC program due to student enrollment, which happens from time to time. The second transfer, which is quite a bit more moving between the lines, is over this past year, we've been doing significant work on identifying what are the appropriate roles in some of our special education service. So, we've had several Behavior Techs that have, the position itself has transferred to be a paraeducator position based upon the work in the IEP service grids. So, all this transfer is doing is basically moving the available funds from the Behavior Tech line, where the position was opened, to where the position was filled in the paraeducator lines across the way. So, that, all that really is doing is just moving the funds to where we are opening the positions. And throughout the rest of the budget, I'll continue doing that to clarify over time, because we have several more moves to make before the start of next year. So, hopefully, there'll be less transfers next year, so.
Motion to approve the transfers.
Motion, Mayor, seconded to approve. Any discussion? CNN, all those in favor? Pose, carries.
Thank you.
MPS surplus equipment.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. The surplus of the equipment I'm asking for tonight was upon recommendation of Mr. Jonathan Rosenthal. We have several older pianos across the district that are either in storage rooms, hallways, or just frankly, almost in the boiler room, and we're no longer using these pianos. Most of them are very outdated, they're not in tune, obviously, and they're not part of our, you know, curriculum anymore for this, for this program. A lot of what we're doing now is on the electronic phase. We have different keyboards and things like that, which are a lot more easier to move around than a baby grand. So, what I'm asking the school committee to do at this point is recommend them surplus, and we're gonna try to find them some good homes. The hardest part about pianos is moving them, so obviously, we don't want to incur any expenses. That's kind of the goal here. So, if people will come and pick them up, we're more than happy to, you know, give them to good causes. And I know Mr. Rosenthal is very committed to making sure they all go to a good home, and he's already reached out to some folks, but I asked them just, let's not give it away yet, because the school committee has to surplus them first before we do anything. So, this request is to just surplus the pianos in the district that we're just no longer using.
Motion to approve the surplusing of the nine pianos listed.
Motion, Mayor, seconded to approve. Any discussion? CNN, all those in favor? Pose, carries.
Thank you.
Acceptance of donations and gifts. Coca-Cola Give Program: Richer School Student Activities, $46.95.
Motion to accept.
Motion, Mayor, seconded to accept. Any discussion? CNN, all those in favor? Pose, carries. Stop and Shop A+ Program: Richer School Student Activities, $87.98.
Sorry, motion to accept.
Motion, Mayor, seconded to accept. Any discussion? All those in favor? Pose, carries. Measured Progress: Whitcomb School Programs and Materials, $170.
Motion to accept.
Motion, Mayor, seconded to accept. Any discussion? CNN, all those in favor? Pose, carries. College of Holy Cross: Whitcomb School Professional Development, $1,000. Is this in the name of superintendent?
No, it's the name of Latin. We, our Jocelyn Demuth brought in a teacher that she mentored, so.
Fantastic.
Thank you. A Latin teacher. Motion to accept.
Motion, Mayor, seconded to accept. Any discussion? CNN, all those in favor? Pose, carries. Reports of committees? Any reports of committees? Ms. Hennessy.
Thank you. I wanted to actually thank the committee for the approval, when I was absent from the meeting last time, for the approval of all of those policies. Ms. Bodenhendger met with me to alert me to a few minor amendment changes that we, that you needed to have made. We have done so, and those have been submitted, and I believe are now live up on the website, so I wanted to let you all know that. And then, we have another policy meeting coming up this Thursday, so we're gonna keep on going, so we can get everything updated. So, that's it, thanks.
Thank you. Any other reports of committees? CNN, members forum. Any members? Ms. Bodenhendger.
Thank you. Ian, as you all know, I am on the board of MAS C, and at our board meeting tomorrow night, the DESE Commissioner will be joining us. So, if anyone has any specific questions they would like directed, we have a bunch that we are already planning to ask, but if there's any questions that anyone from the committee, if you want to reach out to me between now and tomorrow night, be happy to ask the Commissioner.
We'll get those over to you.
Okay. That's it, thanks.
Any other members? Ms. Hennessy.
Thank you. I did want to actually say something, that I was able to go to the STEM Expo that was held on Friday, and I think a number of you all were able to be there as well. It just really continues to be impressive each year about the different things that they show, and, and the execution, and the depth of knowledge, and what they're trying to do. I have, like, no idea about half of it, so I just, it was really impressive to see, and the kids were really excited to be able to do their presentations, some more than others, but I think it's, you know, it's a great skill set for them to be learning, and I think a number of the judges were really impressed, because some of what they were being asked to do, many of the engineers that were coming back to judge said that they never even got to some of that until later on in college. So, I just think it's, you know, I love hearing that we're pushing, pushing the limits, so, good stuff. And graduation walk, I did want to highlight that we had a number of retirees and even some teachers that had moved on to other districts, but had been here for a while that came back, and it was absolutely fabulous. So, I would encourage other past teachers, if you have the opportunity to come back next year, please do so. It's just really heartwarming. The kids love, love it, and the younger kids love seeing that connection, too. So, thank you so much for supporting doing that, and I hope that we can continue it. It's wonderful.
Any other members? Any other members? Oh, Ms. Matthews.
I just want to congratulate the class of 2018 on a successful graduation in a not-too-hot field house, thankfully. And I wish them all the best of luck. It was under two hours.
Great ceremony.
Yes, it was very nice.
Anyone else? Contain a motion.
Move to adjourn.
Motion, Mayor, seconded to adjourn. Any discussion? CNN. What?
Sorry. I signed the warrant.
Who are you sliding in now?
I signed the warrant. I keep forgetting to say it. I did.
She signed the warrant.
Oh.
Oh.
Sorry.
We're still in the discussion. We didn't vote yet.
Yeah, we didn't vote.
Um, I just want to alert everyone that I did, in fact, submit the superintendent's evaluation to DESE, proficient on all counts, and...
Did what?
So, we will hopefully reach 100% for our district evaluation protocols.
Thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
Is there anything else?
Do you want us to make up something?
You're sure, oh, no, I'm sure you could. All those in favor? Pose, carries. Thank you very much.